Good evening. It is now six o'clock and I called the June 4th, 2024 City Commission Meeting to order. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Adamchek.
Present.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Present.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Mayor, four commissioners are present. The quorum of three has been met.
Right, thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those wanting to make comments on any item not related to any item on the agenda can do so at this time. Members of the public who signed up in person before the meeting will go first. Gary, you were first on that list.
General A.
Sorry?
He's on General A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. Okay, thank you. And then any other members of the public in the audience may stand to be recognized to come forward. If you haven't already signed to speak, please sign in at the list located at the podium. Please state your name and residential address and an organization you're representing. Thank you. For the record, those who speak will have five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither commissioners nor city staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement. Is there anyone who would like to speak to items not on the agenda?
Jessica Winters, 408 Houston Street. Good evening, and to all the people who have joined us both in person and online, I know that you all worked very hard. It's dinner time and the kids don't put themselves to bed. Just listening to one of these council meetings can be incredibly dry, boring, and I think we can all agree, frustrating at times. Yet you all took the time out of your evening to either log on, tune in, or show up, and that is worthy of respect. Because of my high regard for you, I will try to keep my deep disrespect for our current commission members within the FCC's guidelines. This commission was formed in 1951. Since then, only a handful of times has a commissioner resigned under less-than-ideal circumstances. Yet every single time, our commission has chosen to avoid a special election and appoint a less-than-ideal candidate. This is not worthy of respect. Those commissioners, appointed by their co-conspirators, instead of chosen by the people, had three things in common: all of them were white, all of them served out the remainder of their stolen term, and none of them succeeded in their inevitable attempt to be elected for a second term. I educated myself about this piece of our shared history because I found it odd that according to our commissioners last week, it would be too hard to hold a special election. They claimed they didn't have enough time while actively running down the clock, that it might invite outside money in while their own war chests are filled with outside and inside money, and that multiple people wanted to run for the seat, which is a better argument for holding a special election than avoiding it. This indicates to me and to many watching that this was nothing more than a preloaded excuse for this commission to continue its 70-year record of subverting the will of the people. This is our commission's legacy. It is the status quo they wish to protect, a power imbalance so extreme that these four common citizens abuse every drop of power they can greedily strip from the rest of us, that they can be lauded by the community they neither serve nor respect, and that all it takes to disenfranchise us is cheap lip service. About how hard it is, about how hard it would be to actually do their jobs. I leave everyone here with this: never trust a politician, and always hold them accountable, every day. After the campaigning is over and victory has been claimed, watch the man's cured exterior fade and reveal their true selves underneath. Out of touch, corrupt, children drunk on power, seeking to sell us all out to the highest bidder. They will never hold a special election to appoint a new commissioner, never yield to the people's voice, because for them, it's too good an opportunity for a power grab. To my knowledge, and I have searched, there has never been a special election in Manhattan, Keith, Kansas, to elect a commissioner. However, as one of our current commissioners is already aware, we have had a special election to recall a commissioner. That makes me proud to call myself a townie. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we will close the general public comment period. Commissioners, have you any comments to make? John? Karen?
Right, I just wanted to remind people that there's a wonderful opportunity that you can go to many things in Manhattan, the zoo, the Discovery Center, the Beach Museum, all because of the sunflower partnerships. Have I got that right? Anyway, you're admission free this summer, so you know, take a chance and do it, and it's a wonderful time to see things when maybe it's a little expensive for your budget. And the Discovery Center's got a super, super thing going on right now with butterflies.
Commissioner Opelt, have you any comments?
None this evening, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. All right. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda, or at a different point on the agenda if desired by the commission. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions on items on the agenda, on the consent agenda?
Just on F, the sirens, storm sirens, do we, I thought that was under emergency management.
Commissioner, that's under new business. We have four items on old business that are for this commission to take action on.
I turned it over, okay.
Yep, and then we can get to that once we've seated the fifth commissioner. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public on the old business consent agenda? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. Is there a motion from the commission?
I move to approve the old business consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, city clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Adamchek.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Madam Mayor, I would like to ask the newly-appointed commissioner to come forward and meet me at the front of the commission table.
Please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Manhattan.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Manhattan.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city commissioner.
Of city commissioner.
For the City of Manhattan.
For the City of Manhattan.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Minton. We will now move to business that is on the, to the new business consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are, again, those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those which have been previously reviewed by the commission and may be approved in one motion. As previously mentioned, a commissioner may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comment from the public related to any item on the agenda is allowed. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on the new business consent agenda? All right, seeing...
Now can I ask about the sirens?
Let me close. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion. And now, commissioners, is there, are there questions?
Yeah, I just, I just wondered what the partnership is with emergency, the county, you know, emergency department on the sirens. I mean, do we, do we work with them, or, I mean, who decides, who's in charge of sirens?
No, you're, you're fine. We can take questions. Scott French, our fire chief, will come address the majority.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott French. So, we partner with Riley County Emergency Management on storm sirens. We're responsible for the storm sirens within the city.
Okay.
That's 30-plus years. I don't know how that started or where it originated. We currently have 28, 24 sirens.
Okay.
Inside the city of Manhattan.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
I had a few more questions on that. Scott, you're not going anywhere yet. I know that they're at the end of their year, so I'm assuming, or end of their lifespan. Warranties, are those in place? Like, are we at risk of...
So, the four sirens that we're talking about this evening are the Wayland Dam warning sirens. And so they're end of life. We actually receive those from the Corps of Engineers. And 2024 would have been their 20-year life cycle. So we are replacing those with new federal signal sirens that still have the voice modulation. And those will go on basically the same locations. Northeast Park will have a siren, the water treatment plant will have a siren. Let me get your list and start me trying to do this off the memory. Eisenhower Ballfields, Northeast Park, the water plant, and Truth Park will have these. That's where they'll go. And then we'll be adding a fifth siren to the joint maintenance facility.
I had some additional questions on the spend for this, and it's, it's more, I mean, discussion here, and Scott, you can chime in. So, this option has us paying that out over the course of five years through general fund?
That's correct.
Are roughly annual expenditure for the fire department, the general fund?
About 10 million.
About 10 million?
This year.
How much of that is essentially already reserved with delayed payments of this?
So based on, on a general fund, CIP, it will really be just this project. Will all, be the only expense out of the general fund, CIP, out of the fire department. Over the, so basically, and we're looking at less than 0.8% of our budget.
I just worry about approving things to pass them on to future spend within the general fund. I just want us to be real conscious of, of that, delaying that payment in case we need that for something now.
Fire department also has a fire equipment reserve that has mill levy support. And you can speak to what you typically purchase out of that, Scott, that wouldn't be out of the general fund.
Yeah, so all of our fire apparatus, all of our equipment that is used for firefighting of any significance, our battalion chief vehicle, our emergency response, all the emergency response vehicles are all purchased out of the fire equipment reserve. Most of those are a 10-year lease. Most of the projects, and there are typically over 200,000, range from 200,000 to, a fire truck right now is around $1.3 million. So, those are large purchase items. And right now, I believe the current mill levies, or, yeah, mill levy spore is about 1.18 mils.
Thank you, Chief French. Do we have a motion from the commission to adopt the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner McCullough has made the motion, and Commissioner Mata has seconded. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor Adamchek.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move into the general agenda. First item is to consider using the transient guest tax funds to offset parking costs for conventions held 2024 to 2028 for group rates at the downtown parking garage.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Jared Wassinger, Assistant City Manager. We presented in front of you all at the May 21st meeting related to the first reading of the ordinance amending our downtown garages and city-owned parking garages, which is going to allow LPR, license plate recognition, to go into effect for enforcement in the downtown garage effective August 1st, as well as a fee resolution that set forth hourly rates, as well as group rates for the downtown garage. And that was also approved. You all just approved the second reading of that ordinance and the fee resolution on the old business consent agenda tonight. During that discussion, we had a request from the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, and they were seeking delayed implementation of the fees in the garage to the 1st of the year on January 1, 2025, along with financial assistance through 2028 for conferences that they had already had booked in the conference center, connected to the downtown garage. We had discussed with you all an option related to using transient guest tax funds to offset that cost. And we discussed drafting a policy manual resolution that would be administered by city staff. It would put forth annually an amount of TGT funds that could be used for this program, where entities could approach the city, requesting that those group rates for a multi-day conference, or multi-day event in the area, could use that TGT to offset that $5 group rate for the attendees going to the conference. So we drafted a policy manual resolution. I know we talked about that kind of in big picture, but now we have that draft in front of you for consideration tonight. The first section, Section A, just gives a background. It does describe TGT and the uses that it has to be used for according to our charter ordinance related to the tax that we levy. And it just gives a general outline that the commission is, you know, willing to provide that complimentary parking to attract and retain conventions in the downtown area. From a procedural standpoint, this program would be in effect from August 1st, when fees go into place downtown, through December 31st of 2028. And we would be transferring TGT funds to the parking fund to offset that complimentary parking. We'd propose for the remainder of 2024, $115,000 as a maximum amount that would be available for this program that could be used to support that complimentary parking. And then in future years, '25 through '28, annually, we're going to budget that amount. And we would anticipate annually that that, that amount would decrease, just based on the, the need for it. We're aware that the Manhattan Convention and Visitors Bureau is really eyeing this for multi-day conferences that are already booked throughout the year. So that's the approach there. And we're obviously going to need to evaluate the TGT fund as a whole, and we'll be discussing that during the 2025 budget process of, the TGT fund has other commitments to it, so we need to balance this request versus all of the other former commitments that we have. There is a healthy balance in the fund right now, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be money available to this extent in future years. So we go through that budget process annually. We describe what type of entity would be eligible to apply for these funds, and we describe them in these two sections here, that you have a convention that's in the downtown area that has a minimum of two days, and that they have a block of a minimum of 30 rooms at a hotel. This deviates a little bit from the requests that the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce and the CVB is requesting, but from a policy program perspective, we are always recommending that we create non-content eligibility criteria from a fairness perspective, because we can't isolate a certain company, or a certain group, or a certain type of event to be eligible for public funds. This is a program that we would anticipate is available for any event in downtown. It doesn't, so we wouldn't just stipulate that someone with a conference at the conference center is the only one that is eligible. There could be, as an example, you could have a multi-day event in Blue Earth Park where people are using hotels in the entire downtown area, and they're looking for that complimentary parking. That would qualify just as much as a conference that's in the conference center. So we have those two eligibility criteria, and then we set forth that, you know, that entity would apply, they would need to do that within 14 days prior to the event, and that's for the sole purpose that creating those codes to allow complimentary parking doesn't happen overnight. It takes time for Adrian's staff to work with Park Mobile and IPS to generate those codes, get those distributed, so that there's that seamless transition for the day of the event, so that the code works and people aren't charged for parking. After those conferences occur, Adrian is able to calculate how many people use that code, and how many days, at a $5 rate, and we can take that transfer from TGT to the Parking Services Fund. And we'll likely do that on a monthly basis. This program would be administered by city staff, and we would take applications on a first-come, first-served basis. That would be the other criteria. And it would be, of course, based on if funding is available. Happy to answer any questions or clarify anything?
Jared, I have one. Would, suppose someone was holding a very large wedding and reserved a block of rooms at one of the hotels. Is that something, the way this is written now, would they be eligible to, to apply for parking rebate?
If it were a two-day wedding?
Well, if people...
Possibly. Yeah, we would need to evaluate that, but if it met this criteria, yes. If it's a multi-day event that has a block of 30 or more rooms, yeah, it would meet the criteria.
Do we want to, is, is there any way to put language in that would specify that it needs to be a, you know, a formal convention, or a, a formal kind of...
That, that gets into content. You know, you're, you're differentiating. Why, why can't a wedding be eligible for this? They're bringing in people from out of town, just like a conference is, one could argue. So, the reason we avoid those, that content-based criteria is to avoid a group challenging why one group is eligible for funding and another with a similar approach, similar intent, isn't eligible. But this, you know, the first-come, first-served basis does, you know, we would open up applications probably a month or so before the beginning of the year on an annual basis, once we know that funding is available and we're, we're committed to that. And then those, those groups can, can buy for those, those dollars.
Thank you. Karen, do you have?
I can see subsidizing this year because they've got contracts, but it seems to me that anybody who goes to a meeting where they're staying overnight is probably going to a convention and is not paying to go to that, and $5 extra to park in the garage. And if they park at the Hilton, they have to pay $10 to park in the parking lot. So, I just really think this is unnecessary after the first year.
This is a decision of the governing body to make as it relates to that request, so...
Karen, I agree with you. I think for $5 a day, it's created a lot of, I mean, clearly we have questions about loopholes. I think this creates more of a burden on city staff that they don't really need in managing the applications. And so I, I just have some questions about, maybe they're not questions, those are statements, I guess, about, about that. And I think we're jumping through a lot of hoops for $5 a day per person. That can either be, if they get that group rate, it can be covered by the conference or by the person. But, I mean, there are options of that, so I think we're, I think you guys have already put a lot of time into this for something that...
Yeah, if you all recall the flow charts I created at the 21st meeting that had that size eight-point font. Regardless, there is going to be a group that is seeking the group rate. In order to get the $5 rate, you need to approach Adrian regardless to say, hey, I have a group of people coming for this amount of days, or this day, I need the group rate. And that is still an application that's going to occur. And like you're saying, a conference could pay for that upfront, or they could pass that along to their users. And they'll pay when they get there, with a, with a similar code that would give them a $5 rate instead of a $10 rate per day.
I think one of the...
Jared, I have a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, so when we talked to Marcia a couple weeks ago, we had kind of talked about how the reason we were doing this was that we already had conferences that were booked, that when they were booked, that garage had free parking. And that moving forward, the language in their, in their documents had, you know, the prevailing rate listed. So it, it kind of sounds like we may have changed this, the scope of this a little bit to being that anybody in, between now and 2028, will be able to apply for this, this fund. I had kind of assumed that it was just so that we could cover for the folks who had already booked before we decided on, on a parking rate. Is that, do I have that correct?
So, the CVB did have that request, and that's where I tried to articulate back on May 21st, that the policy manual resolution wouldn't necessarily reflect what their request is, based on, again, that content eligibility criteria. Because the example, you, you have a specific group that is coming to the commission and asking for funding to offset costs that they specifically have, or are trying to provide complimentary parking for, where we would recommend against a, a policy that has that content criteria and kind of singles out an individual group. It does allow, though, you know, the CVB knows what those conferences are, and they can apply for that funding first, if, if they, if they choose to do so.
So, so my, my, my thought, it's not really a, a content restriction, it's a time restriction, where, you know, if you've already booked, or, you know, if you, if you book in six months, you know we're going to charge you. You know that there's going to be a parking fee for that garage. But, and, 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 you know, take that into your calculations of whether or not you're going to book here. So, you know, I, yeah, I'm kind of struggling with this, because like, I, it kind of, I kind of assumed that it would be just, just those events that have already been, been booked, and, and we were trying to, to help them out.
Yeah, and I think, Peter, this is Jason Hildreth, interim city manager. We, we had talked about other options than creating a policy manual resolution, and those would have resided with the CVB. I don't know if they rejected that option, but they could build within their own budget in the conferences they schedule and they contract for. For whatever reason, we're, we're landed here on this policy resolution, and from our perspective, we need to treat whoever approaches us in a similar manner. So if we're going to adopt this tonight, it'd really go through the end of the year. June 20, what is it? June 25th, we'll have outside agencies here speaking to the use of transient guest tax. And then the July, I believe, 13th, no, it's not 13th, maybe the... 2nd, 16th, so the 23rd of July, the Chamber and CVB will be here to talk about their budget requests. So I do think there is this August 1st deadline that has kicked us into this mode. There were other options explored, and Jared, I don't know if you have reactions or if CVB and Chamber rejected those options previously, but-
The CVB did prefer this approach. One thing you have to take into account is the CVB isn't the only group who is securing conferences. They are a player that is bringing in groups to the Hilton, right? Or any conference. They're trying to, that's their goal, is to bring visitors and conferences and other things into Manhattan, and they have a hand in a lot of those, but they don't have a hand in all of them. So if we were to take the route that Jason's described, where annually we're giving money to the CVB, say you're giving them $115,000, not all of those conferences are within their control. A lot of those are in the control of the Hilton. It's a direct contract between the Hilton and an entity. So then you have the Hilton, who's requesting CVB give them money to offset that complimentary parking, which is complicated for them as well, and it kind of forces a relationship there for them to be on-
Well, you say it's complicated, but really is that a bad solution? Gets us out of the administration and gets the CVB to know, I know one of their complaints is they'd like to be abreast of all the things coming to town, and oftentimes-
They do, yeah. Yep.
Is there, is there, is there, I mean, so, I mean, since we're setting the budget for this every year, we could, future commissions decide, hey, you know, we did 115 this year, we're going to do, you know, $65,000 this year and $30,000 next year, and just kind of taper it down like that? I mean, that's, that's an option for future commissions to discuss, though, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And could we just, could we include that? I mean, would it be easier for CVB to administer this or for us to administer it? I guess, either way, it ends up in Parking Services, right?
Yeah, either way, we, Parking Services is administering the program, whether TGT's paying for it or a private group is paying for it. One thing you, that does cause actually more work, you could say, for the Parking Services group is that they're going to be receipting in more payments, as opposed to, it's a lot easier for Adrian to just do a calculation in that money transfer from the TGT to the Parking Services Fund, which is, both are internal funds, whereas annually, we're going to give the CVB money, and then they're going to give it back to us. So there is more paperwork, you could say, from that approach.
I do want to think about, I mean, we're using TGT funds, so then the question I have is, is this the best use of the TGT funds available? Because by using them here, we can't use them elsewhere, and I can't say that that is without, you know, looking at what our other options are, which, it's a longer statement on what the options are, but items related to tourism within the town, so that's my question for thought.
Yeah, the CVB's comments previously have been about losing business, and they're, they're convinced that if we start charging for parking for these groups who have contracts, that they may lose business. And I think they went out to 2028 because they actually have contracts that go out that far, and again, this is their argument, it's not ours. We tried to create a couple different avenues for the flow of funds to actually take place. Our biggest goal here is to generate revenue so we can take care of the asset, one way or another. And if we're not going to charge the user, we're going to look to transient guest tax to help us keep an asset in place that facilitates tourism.
You know, and I understand going out to 2028 because they have, which, this is not what we're deciding tonight, is the plan after 2024.
Correct. It establishes this program through 2028. Again, you could repeal that.
So I understand-
January 1, 2025, and each year, you're going to set the number. Right now, you're only setting money aside for this year. During this budget season, you could say, actually, no, we're not going to set aside any money. That's the City Commission's prerogative.
I mean, I understand that they have contracts going through 2028, but that's assuming that if they lose somebody over a fairly small parking fee, that they wouldn't be able to replace that conference either because of the parking fee, and I don't, my understanding is the concern is not the ongoing parking fee concern, so I would hope that they would have the ability to rebook anything that potentially could get lost.
I think, if I can, to clarify, I think part of the concern is if those contracts, which, those contractors, contractees, those who have already signed a contract and made a commitment, a number of those will be return conventions. That's part of what the Convention and Visitors Bureau is trying to do, trying to generate repeat business. People are going to say Manhattan is a great place to come, and there's a feeling, a sense, a belief that if we, they're forced to renege on that small part of the, what we all think of as a small part of the contract, that the organization, planning the convention, that may be enough for them to think that the Convention Bureau is not acting in good faith, or that the City of Manhattan is not acting in good faith. So I think part of the concern was if we, if contracts were changed midstream, would it tick off the organizers enough that they wouldn't return?
Can the CVB cover funds from within, cover this from within their own funds?
Yes.
It'd be a good question for them either tonight, which I'm not sure they're represented, but in July, they could absolutely give you that feedback.
Because I understand that they're coming and asking the city for those funds, but I think we need, I mean, and there's a little bit of how the CVB is funded, too, but I think this isn't the only solution in order for those fees to be covered, and so if we're not looking at that other solution, which could be the CVB, if that's who has the concern, and I recognize there might be other groups that have, have done this outside of CVB, but I think it's worth exploring what their options are if they're concerned about it.
Yeah, I like the idea of the CVB having responsibility for it and making the yes-no decision as part of their budget, because then they have to weigh, is it spending it on this better than going to some conference event where they're trying to bring in business or not? In a way, us paying for it kind of lets them off the, of the hook of being responsible for Convention and Visitors Bureau. Now, how much we augment, because they, we fund them with this transient guest tax to begin with, how much extra we add to it, we can make a decision on that, but I'd just rather leave it all with them, and they can keep it as long as they want if it's part of their budget.
I would agree with that, and I think, you know, we're talking about large conventions here. I mean, we're only talking about people who need to park to go to the Hilton. Everybody else is parking, if they go to the Blument or the Hall A and On Campus or whatever, those are all, you know, in the, in the program. And large conventions are somewhat limited in Kansas, they kind of rotate. It's probably not as hard to get the Kansas Treasurers Association or the Kansas, you know, Livestock Association. I mean, there's only so many places that can handle them, so I don't think we're in terrible, and those groups don't like to go back to Topeka year after year after year. So, yeah, let the CVB figure this out, and I really, I just find this a pretty small amount of money to change a contract over. And if they've got, they've got reserve funds, then let them figure it out. I really want to see us pay, get some money into that parking structure, because it's calming down around our ears.
So one thing to consider with putting this on the CVB is that they're probably going to ask us for that money in their outside agencies' request, which we can choose to or to not fund, but it's probably going to be in their calculus as well.
I think part of your, your timing issue with them is they're going to talk about a 2025 budget request come July, and you really won't take action on that until September, and we don't fund them then until the following year for that amount. They'll have to respond as to whether or not they have the available funds now for when this takes effect, August 1st.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could look at for the balance of this year if we wanted to pass this, or we could even pass this exact thing and just tell them we're not going to renew this come the year, so ask what you want for '25, because this is going away after this year.
You have that flexibility.
That works for me.
Are there any additional comments? Is there a motion how to proceed?
You want to do a public comment here?
Sorry?
Public comment?
Oh, yes. Would anyone like to, from the public, make a comment? Gary, would you mind, Gary? Yeah, but you signed in for-
Right, but you can use the same information. Gary Olds, 3308 Frontier Circle, appreciate the opportunity to sit in as the public and who's ever listening, to try to understand this. Just have a general question for probably the budget people. I'm curious, and I don't have a lot of heartburn on how you all spend sales tax or TGT tax or probably fees or things like that, but I'm just curious, as a citizen, what's the current balance of TGT in relationship to the $115,000 that's being offered in this discussion? And what is the typical, if there is such thing as typical or average, revenue that is generated by TGT? And is that shared with other entities such as the county or da-da-da-da, whatever? General questions? Do I get an answer, or was that just my comments?
I got them, I'll take them down if you got more comments, Gary. Please, you got, you can use your time.
Just those things. I'm just curious on the TGT.
As far as an annual transient guest tax revenue stream, it'll vary anywhere from $2.5 to $3 million over the last couple of years. We've projected $2.75 million for next year. Rena and Rebecca will have to help me on the current balance unless you know, Jared.
How are you? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Currently sitting in the fund is about $2.1 million. We do have obligations for the contracts that we approved at the end of 2023 for this 2024 budget year, so the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Downtown Manhattan, Inc., Aggieville Business Association, the Wolf House, as well as Manhattan Art Center. In addition, we do have city obligations in terms of some debt that we have used TGT funds to pay for as well.
So about how much of that is obligated?
So our budget for 2024 was $3.8 million.
Is it about 80% to 90% of that is already allocated elsewhere? Is that, I mean, that's a big range there, but-
Yeah, our budget would include a cash balance, and we're probably obligating anywhere from $2.7 to $2.8 million of that total.
Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. There is some misunderstanding about where this transient guest tax comes from and what it's used for. I want to be clear, the transient guest tax funds comes from the guest paying a tax on their room. That money is then given to the hotel, and they pay it, and they remit it to the government. What the Chamber is suggesting is to take that money that has been now remitted to the government, give it back to the Chamber to give it back to the guest that paid the tax in the first place. I'm not sure that's an appropriate thing to ask. The point of attracting convention goers and tourists is to generate funds, not just in our business community, but also in our taxes. And I would like to suggest five new and exciting ways to apologize in good faith for less than $5. One, a free complimentary coffee service. Two, one free guest pass to the Sunset Zoo or the Flint Hills Discovery Center. Three, a small goodie bag. Four, five little apple dollars. The Chamber luckily prints them themselves. And five, available Chamber branded merchandise. Thank you.
Amber, could you sign in, please?
Is there a sheet up there?
Yeah.
Are there any other comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comments. Commissioners, any additional questions for Jared?
No questions. I was just going to, kind of hard to tell if we had a consensus or not, but I was thinking of going ahead and making the motion to approve what we have here, kind of with our own understanding that we're not going to carry it out till '28. We're going to work with the Chamber to change direction on it and then revise this as we go into the new year.
Yeah, I think the way it's even written, if your 2025 budget allocation towards this is $0, we do nothing.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, so in July, when they come, you can talk to them about how you want to proceed with 2025, but it would kick it in for 2024 if you adopt a resolution tonight.
With that, I'll move to approve Policy Manual Resolution Number 060424-C, establishing the downtown convention parking program.
Could you explain again?
So-
So now we're-
Commissioner Motta is recommending passing this resolution.
Which-
Which would allocate funding for this year from August 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024. The policy states the commission annually gets to set forth funding for the future years. So if during the budget process, when we're meeting with the CVB in July-
At that point-
You all let them know, hey, we're not putting any more money towards this program. If you want to request money, we'll give it to you, or you guys could say we're not going to, that's all up to you. It doesn't obligate you for future years, so the program, this resolution will still be in place, but the program wouldn't have any money for it, or you could repeal the resolution at the beginning of the year if you're dead set on that, too. We can facilitate all that.
Do we have a second? I will second the motion. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving into the second item on the general agenda, 2025 budget preparation and discussion.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have several presenters for you this evening. I was going to recommend we start with our guests, our financial advisors, and our bond counsel. Both drove in from out of town to be with us this evening. They've both prepared small presentations for you. Tom Calico with Baker Tilly and Garth Herman with Gilmore Bell are both here, so it looks like Garth's going to start, so appreciate their presence and their insights this evening, and once they're complete, we can probably address questions for them and hopefully get them back on the road a little quicker than the rest of us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garth.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Commissioner. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond counsel. I appreciate you having me out here tonight, so I think that how we'll do this is, I'm going to briefly go through municipal bonds and different ways to finance, you know, various types of projects, both under, you know, Kansas state laws, as well as the various federal tax and securities laws that may apply to that. And then, once my time is over, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Calico to kind of work through some more of the, you know, more specific details as some of that, some of those processes relate to the city. So as I'm going through this, please, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me, I'm not going to take that personal at all. Sometimes these work a little bit better when it's more of a discussion, instead of just me sitting up here for hours, just droning on about bonds. So with that being said- So with that being said, um, basically what I want to talk about now is is municipal bonds as they apply to the city. By going through this, I want to touch on a couple of major items, uh, that are shown up there. Um, the first is why finance at all? What what is the purpose of of issuing debt, uh, to pay for different types of projects? What what is the theory behind that? Uh, I'd also like to talk a little bit about, uh, the different types of financings that the city of Manhattan can do, both in a traditional governmental process, as well as some of the more, uh, unique or exotic tools that may be out there that you have used in the past or maybe, uh, you know, may be able to use in the future. Uh, the third item is is state law limitations and authorizations. So as you know, you're a governmental entity that is subject to various state laws that are passed by the Kansas Legislature. Um, and so I'm going to touch on some of those as they apply to the city when you're doing different types of projects and different types of financings. Uh, last but not least, um, I want to just briefly walk through the process itself, from the authorization to the actual sale and issuance of that debt, uh, to the final point where you actually get the money in the bank, so then you can actually use it for those projects. So to start off with, like I said, why finance it all? You know, we're we're all, you know, individuals, and when we have projects, we either save up the money and we pay for those, or if it's a large-scale project, uh, we go to the bank and we get a, we get a commercial loan if we're a business, or we get a personal loan if we're building a house. Uh, why are cities different? Why why can't the city just go out and do that? It actually relates about ninety years ago, back during the Great Depression in the nineteen thirties. Um, there were a lot of concerns that cities in Kansas, uh, may end up going bankrupt because there were a lot of debts and contractual obligations that they had taken on that nobody really knew about. Uh, they may just go down to the bank and they get that friendly banker to give them a loan, and nobody really understands repayment terms or anything about that. And so there was a lot of concern during that Great Depression that there was going to be large-scale municipal bankruptcies. So the Kansas Legislature back in the thirties passed what's called the Cash Basis Law. And in essence, what this law says is that if you are a political subdivision that funds your operations from property taxes, then you cannot enter into a contract to make a payment unless you have that same amount of money on hand and you have the budget authority to make that payment. So if you enter into a contract for a million-dollar project, then Cash Basis says you have to have a million dollars available so that if you had to pay for that entire contract on that day, you'd be able to do that. That's the Cash Basis Law in a nutshell. Now, that is very constricting. And and like I said, that applies to any government that gets property taxes, so that cities, counties, school districts, townships, drainage districts, everything across the board. Very constrictive, and so there are ways that were built into that, exceptions to the rule, to allow cities to still be able to go out there and finance those projects that they need. Uh, one of the main ways that cities, county, school districts are able to get that exception, the Cash Basis Law, is through the authorization and issuance of bonds to pay for those projects. So once again, in my example, if you have that million-dollar project and you sign that contract, you have to have a million dollars available. If you don't, if you go through the process instead to authorize bonds to finance that million-dollar project, even though you don't have the money in the bank, you're okay. That's not a Cash Basis violation. You're complying with the Cash Basis Law by doing that. And so that fundamentally is the reason why cities, counties and school districts finance their large-scale capital projects, because they want to, um, you know, comply with the requirements of the Cash Basis Law. So when we talk about those bonds and those projects and how we get there, there's basically four main steps. Show them up there. Project authorization comes first. So once again, that is that bond authority to give you the exception of the Cash Basis Law. Kansas statutes have a variety of different ways to finance a variety of different projects. So if the city has a sewer project, then it needs to authorize for bonds. There's a handful of statutes that my firm, working with city administration, will look through to figure out which of those laws applies to that specific project. And there are statutes for sewer projects, street projects, water projects, uh, park projects, public building projects, anything, anything of a capital nature that you can think of. There's a state law on it, and the state law says, here is how the city authorizes this specific type of project. So that's a lot of what we do on the front end, working with the city, is determining what kind of projects do you have and how do you get those authorized? That authorization might take the form of, city commission adopts a resolution, pretty cut and dry, simple majority. It might take the form of, you have to provide notice and protest for a certain type of a project. So you might adopt that resolution, you have to publish it once a week for two weeks in the city newspaper, and then there's a thirty-day protest period. Um, the type of the project may require a successful election before you actually have the authority to sign that contract and to issue the bonds to pay that cost. And so that's the first step, and it's a very important step, because like I said, it's all driven by the state law requirements and making sure that we have the proper authority to issue those bonds. Once you've been through that process, then we get into the actual marketing and sale of the bonds. So we're not actually selling them yet, but in essence, what we're doing is we're pulling together a lot of the information about the city, and we're using that, working with Tom Calico and his folks over at Baker Tilly, to help get information about the city out into the municipal marketplace. Most of your bonds are actually sold at what's called a a public sale, so it's like an auction. So in essence, a city would provide notices, says at eleven o'clock on Tuesday, we're going to take bids, and we're going to sell, you know, these amount of bonds for these projects. Banks, if you want to buy these bonds, submit your interest rates as to what you would like to see on these. And then at eleven o'clock, the window for the bids closes. Those bids are evaluated, and the lowest interest rate, the lowest interest cost to the city, is usually how it's determined for the best bidder. That's, in order to get that word out about the sale, though, there are various documents that are put together, various notices that are provided to those investment banks to drum up the business, because the more bids you get, most likely, the better the result is going to be for the city. So that's the marketing and the actual sale of those bonds. Once the sale has occurred, final interest rates are determined, the purchaser is determined, the final principal repayments are determined. The city approves the bond resolution, or they approve the temporary note resolution, and then we have to get various state-level approvals. Every bond in the state of Kansas has to be approved by the Attorney General's Office. Every bond, um, that that is issued, it has to be registered in the Office of the State Treasurer. So that's a lot of what my firm does after the sale. We're working with the city staff. We're making sure we have all those documents that Brenda prepares for us and sends over to us. We run those through the various state agencies to make sure that the city has all of its necessary approvals to actually issue the bonds. That's the final step. Issuance is also called closing. That's when the deal actually closes. So a closing is when the bond is turned over to the possession of that winning bidder, that investment bank with the best interest rates. That's when they actually take possession of the bond. In exchange, they pay the purchase price to the city. So it's at closing that you actually get the money from the bond sale that you can then immediately start using to pay for your project costs. So for instance, city had a temporary note sale and a bond sale a couple of weeks ago. We're coming up on June fourteenth. That is the closing of the bonds and the closing of the temporary notes. So on June fourteenth, that is the actual day that the note and the bond are going to get turned over to the possession of the purchaser, and the purchaser is going to wire that money into the city's bank account. That's actually what happens at closing. Those are the four main steps that lead from the beginning of determining which projects and how you need to get them authorized, all the way to when you get the money in the bank to actually pay for those projects. As I say up there, uh, it could be a lengthy process. If you have to have an election for those projects, it's always best to plan ahead, because elections are hard to pull together. They take time, they take money, they take effort. So just kind of things to keep in mind. It's not necessarily a quick process. We've been through it enough times. Uh, we kind of know the road, but still, it takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of time. Looking at the different types of bonds that a city may issue, so these are kind of the traditional obligations. These are what the city, uh, issues a lot of. So we have general obligation bonds, which are the long-term debt instrument that the city uses. Um, you issue geo-bonds to pay for your capital projects, you make city a large projects that you're working on, whether it's Aggieville Garage, or, you know, some of the pool projects, some of the park projects, most of your street projects. Those are all general obligation bonds. Um, you can also issue what are called temporary notes, which are basically like a short-term general obligation bond. So the way to think about it is, once again, if you're building a home, you go to the bank and you get the construction financing. Once you've completed your home, you do the long-term, you know, thirty-year mortgage to take out your construction financing. Similar process to temporary notes and geo-bonds. The ge- the temporary notes are used to provide that construction financing for the projects themselves. They can only go out for up to four years, so they provide the money to get the project built. Once the project is built and it's time to pay off that interim financing, that's when the city oftentimes will come in and issue the general obligation bonds. Those are the longer-term debt to refinance the temporary notes, and then those geo-bonds get renewed over a longer time period. They can go up to thirty years. Typically, we see the geo-bond repayment between a ten and twenty-year time period. But that's basically the relationship that they have. Uh, your geo-bonds are very secure. They're payable from any source of funds that's legally available, but ultimately, they're backstopped by the city's ability to levy taxes, and your bond and interest fund to repay those. Because of that tax backing, they're very, very secure. You're going to have your best interest rate from the issuance of a geo-bond because of that very high security level. Uh, the other, the third type that I have up there for traditional obligations are what are called governmental-purpose revenue bonds. So, um, you can see these in the context of if the city has a utility. Like some cities, they have an electric utility, or they have a water utility. They might have a stormwater utility. You know, basically, some sort of a function that that provides governmental services, but you you get rates and charges and fees for that service. Um, you can issue revenue bonds that are payable solely and only from those charges and revenues from the use of that utility. Um, we see those from time to time, depending on the project. They can make a lot of sense. Um, but a lot of times, cities may just end up doing those general obligation bonds and then using revenues from their utility to help offset those payments. So and then you kind of get to the same place where you're still using your revenues from the utility to make those payments, so you're not just relying on the taxing power, but you still get the lower interest rate and the higher security from those geo-bonds. Moving on to some of the more kind of unique financing tools that are out there. Um, the first one that's mentioned up there, industrial revenue bonds. Um, the city has issued these in the past. Usually, these are not, and they're they're a bond of the city, but they are not an obligation of the city. So the city of Manhattan would issue an industrial revenue bond for a company, and the company has the requirement to repay the bond. The city does not. Uh, by issuing these bonds, the city does get various benefits. Um, there may be a sales tax exemption that they're able to use in order to keep their project costs down. Uh, basically, anything that they buy that would be subject to sales tax, if they have an industrial revenue bond that's going to finance that purchase, then they can get an exemption and they would not have to pay sales tax on those purchases. Uh, likewise, an industrial revenue bond can provide for a property tax abatement of up to ten years and up to a hundred percent of the property taxes abated during that ten-year period. I say up to on both of those, because it's a negotiation between the city and the company as to what level of, uh, abatement you may be willing to provide for that project and for that company. A lot of times, it may also be spelled out in your policy, kind of how you want to look at that. Ultimately, though, like I said, those industrial revenue bonds, they are not an obligation of the city. So if for some reason the the company does not repay that bond, that's the company's fault. The city has no moral obligation to repay that bond. Frankly, the city is prohibited under state law from using public funds to repay that bond. So the city issues it, but your function is solely as a conduit issuer, because that's how state laws are it. That's how the law is written to provide for that. Uh, with regards to community improvement districts, these are, uh, and we're kind of getting down into some special districts now on on these next four items. Community improvement districts are are set areas within town where the property owners submit a petition to the city requesting the creation of a community improvement district and requesting either the imposition of an additional sales tax or additional special assessments that are levied and collected only on the properties within that district. The money from that CID sales tax or from that CID special assessment are used to repay project costs that can be built and constructed within the boundaries of that district. Uh, but I always like to remind everybody, kind of two things on that is, one, it it is a new tax at the request of the property owners. So it's not something that the city can just come in and oppose over the top of it. It's at the request of the property owners. And the second thing is, it's a new tax only within the boundaries of that district. So if a CID sales tax goes into effect, it's only within the boundaries of that district. It's not across the entire city. You know, nothing like that. But that is definitely a tool that a lot of cities look at when they have different types of improvements or maybe development or redevelopment that, uh, you know, that the developers may be looking for some tools to help provide an additional source of cash flow for that project. Uh, moving on to tax increment financing, city has some experience with this also. It's another special district within the boundaries of that district. It is able to use the increased property tax.
Yeah, how does a community improvement district differ from a TIF?
So a TIF is, a TIF is not new taxes. A TIF uses the existing taxes and it reallocates them to a different purpose. A community improvement district imposes a new tax, so.
I I thought a TIF, you took the the taxes that say, you know, they were, and then the difference was going only to improve that area.
Yeah.
Is that wrong?
No, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah, so so in a TIF, so you have the boundaries of your district, and whatever the value of the property in that district is when it's created, that's what's called the base value.
Yeah.
And so TIF is all based on property taxes. And so the property taxes that are levied on that base value from the city, the county, the school district, you know, various other entities, the tax revenue from that mill levy still goes to those jurisdictions. So the city still gets theirs, and the county gets theirs, and the school district gets theirs on the base.
On the base.
Those, so as that property is improved and it develops and the value goes up, it's the same mill levy being levied on that property, but the property tax revenue from those same mills that are collected on that increased value, that's what gets diverted and reallocated back to pay for the TIF project costs, so.
And so is there a point in borrowing and financing um, when the other, um, tax entities like the schools and the counties are sort of overtifed? I can say that. I mean, you know, they're not receiving. There's just so many things be- being, we use the TIF a lot in Manhattan.
Yeah.
And it concerns me that then the school district is not receiving any of those finances, and they have costs, so they then raise their mill levy, so the whole aggregate, um, goes up.
And it and it and it could. So a couple of things to keep in mind about that, because you're you're exactly right. In essence, the the TIF project is asking for the county and the school district, give up your future increased tax revenues for this project. And in exchange for that, we will give you the opportunity to veto that TIF district. So for that exact point, in the early processes of putting together that TIF, the county has a veto right. By simple majority vote, the county could say, we don't like this TIF district, we're going to veto it, and if they veto it, that's it. The school district has the same veto right at the beginning of the process. So before the TIF district is created, like I said, the county and the school district, they both have the right to say, not this one. But once that right is passed, in essence, they understand the project, they understand, you know, the the deal. And if their chance for the veto right is passed, then that's that's kind of their bite at the apple to say, no, we don't like this project. Now, the TIF, as I mentioned, it's dependent on mill levies. And so. And so those aren't, those aren't static. They, they change throughout the life of the project. And so if one entity increases their mill levy a lot, well, then that means that there's gonna be more property tax revenue that's collected off of that increased value. So there will be more property tax revenue for the TIF project. Other side of the coin, if somebody drops their mill levy a lot, well, that's gonna decrease the amount of the property tax revenue collected on that incremental amount, which then would decrease the amount of the TIF revenue eligible for the project. So there, there's a lot of kind of iterative pieces that, that go into that. But big picture, that's, that's kind of how TIF works, is it's property tax-based. It's a reallocation of the existing taxes as they're levied on that increased value. RHID, reinvestment housing incentive districts, it's basically TIF for residential housing. So it's very similar process. The county and the school district, like in TIF, they also have a veto right in case they don't like the specific RHID project, so they have the chance to weigh in on that. Ultimately, once the RHID is created, though, works the same way. You have a base amount. Everybody still collects their property tax revenue from that base amount. As the district develops, the value goes up, the property taxes on that increased value are redirected to repay the reinvestment housing incentive district eligible cost. Difference, main difference between TIF and RHID, though, is it's all based on the assessed valuation. TIF you usually see in a commercial aspect. So the assessed valuation for commercial is, I believe it's like twenty-nine percent of the fair market value or the appraised value. Uh, for RHID, the residential, the assessed value for residential properties is eleven and a half percent of the appraised value. So it, even if it goes really well, the increase is gonna be smaller because the assessed valuation percentage is less than off the commercial. Something to keep in mind there. Uh, last but not least, we have sales tax and revenue, also called STAR bonds. Once again, the city has some experience with this. Um, city actually was one of the, the early users of this back when it was still part of the TIF Act. Uh, in essence, STAR bonds are similar to TIF where they are based on the increased value, but whereas TIF is property tax-based, it's right there in the name, sales tax and revenue bonds are sales tax-based. One of the big benefits of a STAR bond, though, is it's not just the city's increased sales taxes within the STAR bond district. You can also capture the state sales tax increase within the district and the sales that happen in the district. So that's where a big benefit comes from on the STAR bonds and that additional source of repayment and revenue is from the state's six and a half percent sales tax revenue that can get diverted back once again to your project. Couple of limitations under state law that we need to keep in mind also. Um, you know, kind of going back to the cash basis and there were worries about, you know, cities running up too much debt. And so there are limitations that are under state law for how much general obligation debt a city can have outstanding. The debt limit is thirty percent of your assessed valuation. So that's, that's the limit. Always like to say, laws are written by lawyers, so there are exceptions to every rule that's out there, though. And so there are many exceptions to the, um, to the debt limit cap as well. Um, the main ones that would apply to the city of Manhattan, if you have general obligation bonds for sanitary sewer, stormwater sewer, water projects, those don't count against that thirty percent debt limit. Um, your geo-bonds that you have refunded, those don't count against your debt limit. If you have street projects, street projects count, but the intersection portions of street projects don't count. Those are exempt. So there are various exceptions that are built into that. So it's, it seems like a hard and fast thirty percent, but then there are definitely some exceptions that have been built into that based on what the legislature has thought are, are, you know, necessary types of projects. They want to make sure that if a city has a large-scale water project, that it's not gonna be prevented from doing that simply because of the debt limit. Um, and I'm gonna go through this part here fairly quickly, um, because I think that Tom may be getting into some of this also, but just kind of looking at some of the bond sale considerations. So when you go out and you have those bond sales, there are various things that the investment bankers are gonna look at. Um, state law has interest rate limits. So even if the bids that come in, if they have interest rates that are too high, if they're above what the state law says that a city can have on your bonds, then you can't accept that bid. And it, it changes every week, so it's, it's a, it's a moving target to try to stay with the market. But there are usury limits on how much you can pay on your bond and indebtedness. Um, a couple of ways to help out with your interest rates and to keep them lower is bond ratings. The better your rating, the better your interest rate that you're gonna get. Uh, one way that you can help get in, or, uh, get ratings also is through the use of bond insurance. So there are actually companies out there that will give you a bond insurance policy on the repayment of your bonds. And if you do that, then you get the bond insurer's rating associated with those bonds also. So once again, it goes back to the better the rating, the better the credit, the lower the interest rate. Uh, the last thing I have up there that, that a lot of bankers look at is continuing disclosure compliance. So the city every year has to file certain information about your audits and operating data. Under federal securities law, you're required to provide that information, and then you have to talk about if you've ever failed to provide that information. The investment bankers, they think that that's very important. They take a hard look at that. So that is definitely something to keep in mind as we're going up to that bond sale process also, that these are things that, that are important, that the buyers of your bonds are gonna look at. And that's all that I had. So I'm gonna pause to see if there are any more questions, and if not, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom.
Commissioners, any questions? Peter, any questions?
Well, I, I'm still, I'm kind of confused about the difference between, like, the uses between, uh, geo-bonds and temp notes. Um, and this may be a, a bigger discussion, uh, that I could have offline, but, um, just like, you know, why we would use temp notes instead of geo-bonds. Um, for instance, I, I, I remember we talked a couple of weeks ago about some, uh, we're still temp noting some of the costs of the, uh, Aggieville Garage. Um, that seems, uh, like it's a long, uh, ways, uh, since we've completed that to be using temp notes still.
So a, a couple of the benefits of using temporary notes are, are one, so that by the time you do the longer-term bond issue, you're, you're doing the long-term issue for the right amount. So an example is, if we have a project that we think is gonna cost ten million dollars, and if we issue ten million dollars in geo-bonds upfront, that, we're gonna repay ten million dollars of geo-bonds over twenty years. If we do that and our project cost comes in under budget, and that project only costs us nine million dollars to pay for and to build, then in essence, we have borrowed an extra million dollars that we're, that we're gonna repay over twenty years and pay interest on that. So the cost of that bond is gonna be more than what you actually needed for that project. So a lot of times, cities will use temporary notes. And in my example, they would issue ten million dollars in temporary notes. They get the project built, project ends up being nine million dollars. Perfect. We take that remaining one million dollars of the temporary notes that we didn't need, we use that to pay off a million dollars of temporary notes, and then we issue our long-term bond issue for nine million dollars. And so our longer-term issue that we're gonna repay over multiple years and pay interest on, it's right size to the amount that we actually need for the project instead of borrowing too much. The other main thing that we see is, is cities will, it'll help cities with cash flow. And so if you have, if you have a big project and it's gonna be paid from whatever source of funds it's gonna be paid from, it's gonna be paid from, you know, uh, uh, debt service levy out of your bond and interest fund, you may not want that to hit all at once, that mill levy impact. And so by using a temporary note, you may be able to kind of phase in when the repayment of that project from the bonds is actually going to start hitting the city's books so that you have time to properly manage your cash flow and many, and, and manage your repayment sources, so that by the time it's, it's ready to repay that bond, you've had ample opportunity to get ready for that. So those are the two main, uh, uh, areas that I've seen when cities have decided to use a temporary notes instead of just going straight to the longer-term bond issue.
Thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Commissioners, anything else?
Thank you very much.
While we're switching it out, the other, the other good use of, uh, temporary notes is, uh, revenue anticipation. So if you have a grant, for example, and you're not gonna get the grant for a while longer, instead of borrowing the money, you know, if you're gonna get a five million dollar grant, borrow that five million dollars on a long-term basis, that doesn't work, right? So you, you issue temporary notes, and then you get the grant money in before you issue the bonds and save money that way as well. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tom Calico with, uh, Baker Jolly Municipal Advisors. Glad to be with you tonight. Uh, we're gonna talk about financial condition. I think my slides are gonna be big enough that you can read them, but if I get anywhere along the way where any of the type gets too small and you're having a little trouble, let me know, and I'll try and describe for you what we're talking about. Uh, quick, uh, agenda, uh, for you this evening. Uh, we're gonna talk about, um, why financial condition is important. Um, what is Manhattan's, Manhattan's financial condition and how is it determined? And how can the city's financial, uh, condition be improved? You're entering into budget time, um, you know, we all, which we all look forward to. But, you know, and, and consider, a time to consider financial condition is probably not a better time. Um, the annual budget is the commission's most important policy document. It is the document where you decide what gets done. Um, and individually, individual budgets and, you know, multiple budgets over time really do determine the, the city's financial condition. And the real importance of financial condition really can be boiled down to one word, which is choices, right? And it's the same as in our personal finances, right? When you have a strong financial condition, you can choose. So a city that has a strong financial condition can make choices about how to best serve its citizenry. When your financial condition is constrained, most of the, many choices just evaporate. They, you know, they're just not an option, and you end up really being dictated. Your financial condition starts to dictate to you what you're, you know, how you're gonna serve the community. And you can end up in what I would describe as a vicious cycle, which I've tried to depict here on the screen. If you have a poor financial condition, that leads to unmet citizen expectations. And unmet citizen expectations leads to citizens perceiving a lack of value from the taxes that they pay. And that then leads to reluctance among your citizenry to, to pay taxes, to, you know, to contribute revenues towards the better of the community because they don't believe that they're gonna see much value, which brings you right back into poor financial condition. And this is a, this is, you know, a vicious cycle that some communities can fall into. So you're probably wondering, okay, well, what is our financial condition? Well, the good news is, you're, you're already paying a third party to assess your financial condition on at least a yearly, typically more than once a year basis, and that is Moody's Investors Service, who is, uh, who assigns a credit rating to all of the debt obligations. The debt obligations that Garth described for you, to, you know, typically, you go out and you get a, a rating. Um, and a rating, a bond rating is a same, kind of like a credit score on our personal basis. It, you know, it tells potential investors, you know, gives potential investors some sense of what the creditworthiness of the community is. Your, your rating on your outstanding general obligation debt is currently double-A three. Here's where I, can you all read that? Okay. So I circled the double-A category. Um, and it's described as obligations, you know, are, that are double-A are judged to be of high quality and are subject to very low credit risk. So that's great. That's terrific. I don't wanna burst your bubble, but I will tell you this. Most local governments across this nation are either in the A or double-A category. Many, 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 in fact, I would venture that probably the greatest number are in the double-A category. Why? Well, there's a bit of self-selection that happens in ratings. You know, any community, and there aren't many of them, but if a community knows that they're likely to be poorly rated, they just won't get a rating. They'll get bond insurance, like Garth alluded to, or some other solution. Um, so there is a bit of self-selection, and so the ratings among, uh, local governments across the United States are skewed into that A, double-A, and then, uh, and then some triple-A category, but particularly in the A and double-A. Within each of those categories, there are subcategories. So I've given you a sense of where you are on the grand scale, with triple-A at the top. So at, we're at double-A three, which is at the bottom of the double-A category. Um, if you, looking at that table, you'll see the line that's across separates, you know, but the line below the B double-A category, that line is essentially what is considered, considered investment grade and non-investment grade. So above the line is investment grade. Um, below the line is non-investment grade, or otherwise known as junk bonds. So, you know, obviously, nobody wants to be below the line. And there aren't many communities across the United States that are, um, there are individual bonds that are sometimes offered by municipalities, development revenue bonds, for example, for development projects that might fall below that line. Most, most are above. So how does Moody's determine financial condition? Well, they use various forward-looking qualitative and quantitative factors, and those are the local economy, financial performance, what they call an institutional framework, which I'll explain here in a moment, and leverage, which is debt. So let's talk about the economy factor. And I'm just gonna, when I go through these, I, I think Moody's states it well in their methodology, so I'm just gonna share with you what, how they describe it. So the economy factor is described as a city's or county's economy provides important indications of its capacity to generate revenue at the local level. So this is the, the, the revenue generating capacity is what they're really after. And they have two distinct, uh, factors that they use. The first is, they look at Manhattan's median household income adjusted for cost of living, and how does it compare to the, to the national median, uh, household income. So clearly, if a community's median income is over a hundred percent of the national, that's, that's good. That's strong. Um, if it's less, then not so good. I will tell you, Manhattan will always struggle with this one because you have students. You have lots of students, and they don't have much money. So all college towns struggle, uh, on this one. Um, the second, uh, the second factor is the growth in your local gross domestic product compared to the US growth in domestic product. Again, if you're growing more rapidly, or if your domestic product is growing more rapidly than the nation's, then that's a positive. If you're not, not so great. Now, each of these factors gets assigned a weighting by Moody's. The economy factor is rated, it's, it's thirty percent, thirty percent of the overall rating. So fairly high. One thing to keep in mind with each of these factors is, how much do you really control it? Well, the economy, I say low, it's certainly limited. You have limited control. You can influence it over the long term, and you have. You have done many successful economic development projects over the years, which have contributed to the strength of your local economy. So it is something you can influence, but it takes time. The second factor is financial performance, and Moody's describes it as operational and financial strength is a significant driver of credit quality. The financial performance of a city or county inclusive of its governmental funds and business-type activities greatly influences its ability to meet existing financial obligations and its flexibility to- and its flexibility to adjust to new obligations or unexpected contingencies, such as an unanticipated revenue shortfalls or cost increases. So let's unpack that a little bit. There's two important things here. First is it's your governmental funds, so your general fund, your funds that are essentially supported by taxes, and then your business-type activities, which are your enterprises, water, sewer. So they take both of those into account. The other is, this latter part of it basically speaks to what I said right at the outset. It's really, they're talking about choices, right? The financial performance influences your ability to make choices. So there's a couple of factors here. The first one is available fund balance as a percentage of annual revenues. This is your rainy day fund, right? This is how much money have you put away for a rainy day? And I'll share with you a comment that I love to share. You know, after this was, I went to a presentation at, at the Government Finance Officers Conference right at the heels of the, of the pandemic. And there was this one community and they were talking about how, you know, what they, what they did during the pandemic. And, and he made a comment that a, a business person in their community had said to them, he said, "I don't understand local governments." Local governments tend to, when things are good, they cut taxes and they reduce their reserves. And then when things are bad, they don't have any money, so they have to raise taxes, which is just the opposite of what you'd think you would want to do, right? Because in the business world, what they do is when things are good, they squirrel cash away because they know, they know a bad day is gonna come. And when that bad day comes, now they have money and they don't have to raise their prices. So tuck that away for, for future reference. So available fund balance is one of them. And it's the way they judge that is as a percentage of your annual revenues. The next one is unrestricted cash as a percentage of annual revenues. This is basically a liquidity measure, right? This is, this is different than fund balance, which is essentially money that you have put away for the unexpected big projects, what have you. This is your ready cash, so your ability to essentially manage your cash flow. This is also weighted 30%. And this is one where you have pretty high control, right? You can decide how much money you're gonna put into your rainy day fund. You can decide how much cash you're gonna keep on hand. Those are things that you can control. The next one, the one with the kind of obscure name, institutional framework factor. So what this is, is Moody's, because every, right, every state is different. You know, I don't know how many of you follow what happens on the other side of the state line, but, you know, Missouri has a very, they have what's called the Hancock Amendment, very restrictive. You can't raise taxes, issue any kind of debt without a vote of the people. Period. I mean, so it's a very different environment. So every state is different and because, and to account for that, Moody's takes into account, okay, what is the sort of legal framework that communities in your state have to operate under? Kansas, as states go, is actually fairly permissive. And therefore, the, the institutional framework that's assigned to Kansas is double A, so fairly high. And the, and it's double A for a couple of reasons. One is that the governing body can increase revenue meaningfully without state or voter approval. You do have the ability to raise, to raise property taxes and most, most, pretty much most any fee. And also, your ability to reduce expenditures is only mildly externally constrained. So there's nobody, you know, if you, if you needed to reduce expenditures, there isn't some state, you know, like a bunch of state laws or something that would constrain you from being able to make those decisions. Now, again, kinda like your student situation, you have a unique circumstance. You have entered into an agreement with the county to provide police protection. And that agreement limits to some degree what you can do in terms of cost reduction. So, and, and Moody's is aware of that and they do cite that in their reports. This is one where you basically have, you know, no control. And, but the good news is it's only weighted 10%. All right, the last one is leverage. It's basically debt, but it's more than that, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Leverage measures provide important indications of a city's or county's capacity to invest in capital assets and pay annual fixed costs, including debt service, while meeting its core responsibility to provide municipal services. So this is a whole lot, a lot of this is about, okay, how much in leverage debt have you committed to? And how much does that leave you to fund the day-to-day operations of the community? I mean, this is a lot like our personal budgets, right? I mean, if, if, at a certain point, if you eat up all of your personal budget with your house payment, your car payment, utilities, what have you, and you have nothing left, that's a problem. So it's the same at a municipal level. How much of your fixed costs are, you know, eat into your ability to, to, to fund your operations and serve the community? So it's, I said it was more than debt and it is. When Moody's looks at this, they look at debt, but they also look at post-employment benefits. So what obligations do you have towards pensions and healthcare? They consider that as part of the leverage. Also, a lot of communities in this day and age may enter into agreements with developers where they agree, okay, you know, we'll basically give you some rev, you know, a certain revenue over time. Moody's takes that into account as well. So the factors they look at are your total outstanding long-term liabilities as a percentage of annual revenue. I'll just pick a number. So, you know, if all of your obligations add up to $200 million, okay, how is 200 mil, how does that compare to your annual revenues? Then they look at it another way, similar but slightly different, which is your annual costs. So what are your annual payments on your long-term obligations compared to your annual revenues? So they look at it in both, both those ways. This also is weighted 30% and it is one where you have a high degree of control. I'm not gonna go through every one of these. We've got some pluses and minuses here. Moody, you know, the, the important thing to remember here is that Moody's, while they have this, you know, these, these factors and these, that they, that we've already covered, they reserve the right to, you know, make adjustments based on other things. And, you know, some of those are listed here and then there are others. And, you know, basically what they're saying is we're not gonna, we're not gonna only cover our eyes and ignore something that is, you know, patently good or bad that's going on in your community. So how can Manhattan's financial condition be improved? Well, some, I don't know, some of you may remember, in 2021, we did a financial conditions report card for you all. So I'm gonna, and, and I've looked, and I think, I think the recommendations that were in that, that report are still relevant today. So I'll remind you of them. We did say in that report, not too surprisingly, makes sense to focus on the factors that are most within the city's control. We didn't speak to economic development as any specific recommendations because we know you have a, you know, very sophisticated economic development program and we certainly would expect and encourage you to continue that, but avoid obviously creating new long-term obligations as part of that if you can. So the first big rec, well, the big recommendation was debt reduction. Remember, this is one of those things you can control, yes?
Yeah, and I've talked about that, the special benefit districts. We are heavily indebted in that area. And I just think it's something that we should reconsider perhaps, doing all the specials and that kind of thing in the future.
You know, a lot of communities in Kansas have over the years, particularly you get into the Kansas City metropolitan area, you see communities who, once upon a time, were pretty generous with benefit districts and have peeled back. I will tell you, it is not simple. Because what you've, what you're doing, particularly with single-family subdivisions, is you are bifurcating the pricing, right? You have, part of the cost gets paid when a person buys a home and then pays it through their mortgage. And then they have part of the cost that then is separated and is paid through the special assessments. If you're a builder, right, and you're buying a lot and now you have to take, instead of having that bifurcation, all of the costs are now in that lot price. Now that creates, so that builder's saying, thinking, okay, well now I have to price this to the homeowner higher. And I have to explain, well, my price is higher, but it already includes what you would pay over there with the special. Well, you know, that gets, that gets confusing for the buyer.
And I think, I think initially when we had builders that, you know, were having eight lots and just building one house and then one house. But I think our developers in town have gotten to the point where they can develop eight houses at one time. And so I'm not saying that we should do this. I'm just saying that it's something that appears to me that we need to talk about. And whether we're gonna carry, and, and so often it also is very difficult for perception. People don't understand that their property taxes are one thing and their specials are something else that they chose to do. And so they tell us that, you know, I'm paying $8,000 and you're, yeah, it should be half and half perhaps. Anyway, just, I just, I bring it up every once in a while.
Well, there, there are certainly strategies to, that, that could be pursued over, you know, the median term.
I'll do it tomorrow, but.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not something generally you can just flip a switch. Because it does create shocks to the system that aren't really in the city's interest. So, but there are strategies. And the other big thing would help you with is, is just, as Garth alluded to, you do have a debt limit, that 30% of assessed valuation. And this counts as your debt.
It is listed there as a way we could improve our financial condition. And one other thing, I know that we, we always hear the stress of carrying over lots of money and that kind of thing. But I, I will note that back when we were only carrying over a million dollars back in 2011 and 12, I think our bond rating was double A. I mean, I think it was better than, than it is today.
It, we've lost a notch.
Yeah.
We've lost a notch over.
Even though we're, we've got this gigantic, yeah. So it, you know, I just, just something to throw in the mix when we do the budget.
Yep. The other is fund balance. And, you know, I'm a big believer in what the Government Finance Officer Association, which is the professional association for finance directors across this nation. Their recommendation is that you really should base your fund balance on risk. Every community's risk is different. You know, if you are highly reliant on economically sensitive revenues, i.e. sales taxes, then you need to take that into account because as I'm sure we've, you've all observed and experienced over the years, you know, we have good times, you know, the economy goes into booms and recessions. And, and when they're in recessions, sometimes, you know, we don't see the sales tax that we once did. And, you know, so being, that's probably the biggest thing to take account for. But then, you know, do you live in a floodplain area or an area that's prone to tornadoes or? There are all, there are a wide variety of things that I've listed here that, you know, could influence the variability of your revenues. And so the GFOA, you know, recommends that, a process where you go through and you assess those risks and then you size your fund balance commiserate with those risks. And I think that's a very sound way to do it and I would, we, we, we recommended it in '21 and I would recommend it to you again tonight. And then a new one I'm gonna add, which is financial reporting. And Garth alluded to it in his presentation as well, even when he, in one of his, I think, it's either his second or, second to last or last slide, where he talked about continuing disclosure. You know, when, when folks lend you money by buying your bonds, they have a significant interest in knowing as currently as you can possibly provide it, what your financial condition is. And the way we do that is through an, you know, through your audits and your annual comprehensive financial reports. And if they're delayed, that doesn't allow investors to know on a timely basis. But even more importantly, it doesn't allow you to know on a timely basis. And it makes it harder to make those resource allocation decisions. Your times have gotten a little long and I would definitely recommend to you that, you know, you take steps that you can to try and shorten them to get your audits done and your, and your comprehensive annual financial reports. So in summary, a sound financial condition provides you with choices as to how you're gonna serve your community. Bond ratings are an important indicator and a useful indicator of financial condition. And our recommendation is to focus on factors that you can control. Primarily, we think that those that would contribute most to your, to an improved rating and improved financial condition are fund balance, debt, and timely production of your financial reporting. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioners? Peter, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Okay.
I, I just have one. I understand the city of Hayes has borrowed from some of their utility, sort of borrowed from themselves. Do you advise that that's good, bad, or?
Okay.
I mean, could you, could you do temp, temp notes that way and then not have incur the cost or?
So a lot of, and it's not an uncommon, it's a fairly common practice, sort of internal borrowing. And if you have, you know, ample fund balances, that's, that can be a good practice. Here's the thing you have to watch for. Remember, we talked about liquidity? If you basically make loans to yourselves to the point where you don't have a whole lot of cash and therefore it becomes a struggle to manage your cash flow, then it becomes a problem. So you have to think, so you've got to make, you know, if you can do that, sort of internal loans, and you can keep reserves, you know, risk-based reserves, keep those in place and you can maintain your liquidity, then great. But I've seen communities, and I won't name, there's one community here in Kansas who, you know, got downgraded because they had basically created so many internal loans that their liquidity became very poor. And Moody's downgraded it for it. So you have to be careful of that.
Good to know.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
Thank you both for very informative presentations, appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you Garth and Tom for setting the background for many of the topics that we will discuss tonight. Tonight, finance and city administration will present on the year-to-date 2024 financials and request guidance direction for the 2020-25 budget. Each year, we go over our major city revenue sources. And so those that are reflected on the screen are the seven major revenue sources, not only within the general fund, but the last one, of course, was, is within our water, wastewater and stormwater funds. Transient gas, transient gas tax has its own separate fund. And then we do get special liquor tax in the general fund, as well as special parking wreck, and then the special liquor tax fund. And these are important to notate because they are the major sources, again, in the general fund, but then they also have implications to some of our outside agencies. So before you is a graph of our general fund sales tax and it lists out the total year-to-date in orange, our actual for the year in blue, and then the budget for that particular year. And so for sales taxes for 2024, that comprises roughly 18% of the general fund revenues. And then to date, our sales tax is down about 1% compared to 2023 and '22. And this is due to the expiration of the 2012 Raleigh County Economic Development Sales Tax, which was replaced with the 2023 Economic Development Sales Tax, which goes towards infrastructure debt reduction and economic development and workforce housing initiative. So that sales tax that was originally going into the Economic Development Fund and a portion of that going into the general fund, that no longer is happening because of the new sales tax.
What portion was going into the general fund?
What portion of that?
Tax, yeah.
There's a percentage of the, the county portion that was going in there.
There was?
Mm-hmm.
When you look at the total receipts.
When you look at the total receipts, that sixty percent of what the, we were a part of with the county, when it went away, those revenue streams obviously were impacted. It was, it was replaced by our own tax, but we don't get as much from the county under that scenario. Under the original scenario, oh-two to twelve and twelve to twenty-two, we got a portion of the county's tax because they had levied it for that twenty-year period. It's no longer being levied by the county.
So, but our question said that was all supposed to go for economic development. Then how did part of it go into general fund?
The, are you, are we talking about the half cent Raleigh County EcoDevo tax that went away?
Yes.
Yeah, because the total rate for the county dropped from one percent down to point seven. Because they had their own half cent and then they had an additional half cent. The point two is, is not being shared. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, did it go into the general fund previously?
We did have some county portion going into the general fund.
Of the point five that still exists today or of the point five that was part of EcoDevo?
Point five of EcoDevo.
Okay. I mean, we, we obviously had some going off to debt and then we had some going into that collected fund balance that we were using for economic development purposes.
Again, I'm just confused because all that was supposed to be by, could only be spent certain ways. So I don't see how that could have gone into the general fund. And I don't think we ever thought we were going to lose any money. I mean, we're, when we did that other tax from general fund revenues.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that a little.
Okay, yeah, just let me.
Yeah, we'll look into that. Our year-to-date collected is thirty-six percent of the budgeted sales tax revenue in the general fund. And then over the last five years, we have collected on average thirty-five percent of the budgeted sales tax. Are there any questions regarding this particular slide? Property taxes, the two thousand twenty-four budgeted property taxes comprised roughly nine percent of the general fund revenues. Year-to-date, the city collected fifty-seven percent, which is on target as in previous years. Two thousand twenty-four budgeted property taxes for the general fund are four point two-two-seven million, according to six point zero-eight mils. Over the last five years, we have brought in, on average, fifty-seven percent of the budgeted property tax revenue. So we received our first distribution in January and then our second distribution should be coming in this week. Franchise fees is another major revenue source in the general fund and they comprise roughly eight percent of our general fund revenues. Year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, franchise fees are down seventeen percent compared to two thousand twenty-three and down four percent compared to two thousand twenty-two. Year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, we have collected thirty-three percent of our budgeted franchise fee revenue for the general fund in around thirty-nine percent of our collections on average over the last five years of franchise fees. Our compensating use tax, in two thousand twenty-four budgeted use tax comprises roughly four percent of general fund revenues. Year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, use tax is down six percent compared to two thousand twenty-three and eight percent compared to two thousand twenty-two. Year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, we collected thirty-three percent of budgeted use tax revenue in the general fund. And then on average, we are collecting about fifty-two percent of our budgeted compensating use tax. Special liquor tax, as I mentioned earlier, is divided into three funds, general fund, special parks and recreation fund and our special alcohol fund. Year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, we have received, that's, I'm missing a number in there. I'll get that. Four ninety-nine, four thirty-two, a one percent decrease from two thousand twenty-three and a five percent increase from two thousand twenty-two. Year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, we collected thirty percent of the budgeted amount compared to thirty-five percent. And then over the last five years, the city has on average collected to date thirty percent of the budgeted special liquor tax. Transient guest tax is its own separate fund and we are down five percent compared to two thousand twenty-three. At the same time, we have collected fifty-five percent of the budgeted transient guest tax compared to sixty-nine percent at this time for two thousand twenty-three and fifty-nine percent for two thousand twenty-two. The average year-to-date collected is fifty-two percent over a five-year average. Are there any questions about those major revenue sources?
So those revenue sources are representing Q four of two thousand twenty-three, like quarter four of two thousand twenty-three? Is that right? And?
Nope, the same time last year of, so it's January to April.
That's when we're getting the money, but it's from money that was earned the quarter previously, is that right?
Not necessarily for all of the different.
Transient guest tax, more than likely, it's the last quarter and the first quarter of twenty-four.
Franchise is a month behind.
Okay.
And special liquor, it's maybe two, three months behind as well. And sales tax is two months behind.
Which is typically our highest, like, revenue quarters? Is that the right word? I mean, I would say football and so my, my worry is, is football's captured in some of those already and not captured in some of those. And we've increased our, our budget on several of those items. So that's kind of a concern if those are capturing our highest revenue months and we're still pretty low on some of those because of the increased budget for this year.
Yeah, I think when you scroll back through the actuals, you see our green line trying to adjust really to the actual. I, I didn't see a revenue stream in twenty-four that, again, compared to year-to-date. Franchise fees, that thing goes up and down constantly. It just kind of depends on a lot of, of usage of a utility that's a private utility that we really don't have a whole lot of control over. It fluctuates greatly. There were years where Cox and AT&T's business was clearly being impacted by streaming and internet services. At the same time, gas and electric, a lot of different utilities becoming more energy efficient. So those are the types of responses we get from those companies when we ask about the fluctuation in franchise fees. You can obviously see our year-to-date in twenty-four is, is slightly below where we were in twenty-three, but pretty much on par with where we were in twenty-two. The other revenue streams appear fairly flat, comparatively speaking, twenty-two and twenty-three. Generally, over, overall, it was kind of the goal of this evening to show you all just kind of where we are year-to-date, twenty twenty-four versus where we were year-to-date, twenty twenty-three.
The compensating use one is also budgeted significantly. I mean, that's like an eighty percent increase from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four budget. So in looking ahead, I, I think being more conservative with that going forward next year.
Yeah, it may, it may remain right there, one point seven-five for our revenue stream from a budgeting perspective. It's definitely provided cushion in the last couple of years, the actuals versus the budget.
Are there any other questions? Next, I will provide a general fund overview of just our budgeted revenues and our expenditures for two thousand and twenty-four. So for the general fund, a portion of our, a large portion of our revenue balance is comprised of our cash balance that we budgeted for. And then the next is, we rely heavily on sales tax is at eighteen percent. And then our next is, we have a lot of transfers coming in from our utility funds to help with franchise-related fees that they would have normally paid if they were a separate entity as well as payment and lieu of taxes and administrative costs. And then we have property taxes. So our major sources comprise eighty-seven percent of the two thousand twenty-four budgeted general fund revenues. And year-to-date, we have received forty-four percent of those six revenues listed for two thousand twenty-four compared to seventy-six percent in two thousand twenty-three and fifty-three percent in two thousand and twenty-two. We had a budget of forty-five point two-nine-six. And compared to two thousand and twenty-three of thirty-nine point three. And then for two thousand twenty-four, just want to mention again, our budgeted cash balance was fifteen point two. That's why that part of the pie chart is so large. And then increased by eighty-three percent compared to the two thousand twenty-three budget. And that's just due to some of the federal funds that were received as a result of the pandemic. Our general.
So does that percentage of year-to-date, yeah, that first bullet there, does that fluctuate a lot? Is like, are we concerned that we've only received forty-four percent of those revenues so far?
Yes, we're concerned and we'll talk about that more and later on in the presentation. It does fluctuate. Back to this particular slide, the cash balance is one of those that does fluctuate. And so this past year, we had a budget amount of fifteen point two and the prior year, we had eight point two. We actually brought in a carryover of about eleven point one million. And so then that impacts the rest of our revenue budget as well as how we deal with our expenditures. And there's a slide later on that talks about that balance between the revenues and the expenditures. And so back to these previous slides, it's just important to note that sales tax, franchise fees, compensating use tax, special liquor, we only get a portion. Those four revenue sources are the, one of, some of the major ones in the general fund. They're volatile, we have no control over them. The one that we do have the most control over is the property taxes and that's the one that's the most steady in terms of coming in at the rate that we can consistently forecast every year. Property tax, I mean, sales taxes, franchise fees, as Jason mentioned earlier, and then the use taxes. It's just consumer spend and then the franchise fees. There's no way for us to predict what those would be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. On the general fund revenue side, again, this is just year-to-date as of April for two thousand twenty-four compared to two thousand twenty-three. So we're down ten percent in collections. Our franchise fees are down seventeen percent compared to two thousand twenty-three. And then our investment income is down significantly compared to two thousand and twenty-three. And that's because our cash balance dropped significantly from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. For our expenditures, I just wanted to provide this broken out by department and each department's relation of the budget. And then the respective pie graph. And so general government, finance, airport, fire, human resources, public works, parks and recreation, community development, legal, general and outside services, and then municipal services, forty-five million two ninety-six is our budget. Are there any questions regarding this particular slide? Thank you. This slide or this chart provides just the January through April expenditures for the departments. For two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-three, our expenditures are down a little bit. Three percent less than year-to-date two thousand twenty-three are about three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Total general fund budget expenditures for two thousand twenty-four, again, is forty-five million two hundred and ninety-six thousand. And year-to-date for two thousand twenty-four, we have expensed twenty-five percent of our budgeted two thousand twenty-four expenditures.
Rena, can you make a comment on the very large difference between general outside services between twenty-three and twenty-four?
Those would have been transfers out to, so transfers out to our new vehicle and equipment reserve fund to help get that set up and established.
We've held off on doing that this year and just relating back to our January, January and February conversations where we recognized the cash balance drop and the impact of actually setting up those funds to break down our two hundred pieces of vehicles and equipment and our capital improvement plans and our IT setup. So we, we put, put a halt to those to monitor and to keep track of where we're at. The additional three hundred thousand dollars in savings to me, you know, is obviously a part of that. But we're having a hard time drawing back too much. We know those services in, in our key departments are out there and, and we continue to provide those. We're, we're bumping up against, you know, that ten, eleven million dollar cash balance. And we're looking for really some guidance and direction on what you'd like to see in the next few months so we can get to a, a conclusion in September for adoption of a budget.
We also included money to be transferred to our capital improvement reserve fund as well as part of the two thousand twenty-three budget and that is reflected in that amount. Cash balances, something Tom talked about a lot. Our cash balances have increased greatly due to the COVID and ARPA money that we have received since two thousand and twenty. And in two thousand twenty-three, we came forward and spoke about various initiatives that we wanted to do as an organization to fund our replacement of our vehicles and equipment. So we established a vehicle and equipment replacement fund, our pay study, our IT infrastructure needs and then our capital improvements program. And so our target general fund beginning cash balance should be twenty-five percent of our general fund budget. So based on forty-five million dollars, it's about eleven point two-five to eleven point five. We have been targeting between nine point five and ten point five. And that's really since two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, when Tom came and presented that financial scorecard. So with our cash balance, our ideal is to have it at about eleven point two-five. We're a little bit less than that right now. We have monthly financial reports that we review internally. You all receive them as well. But we are comparing what we're receiving in as revenues compared to our expenses and how that targeted cash balance is fluctuating. In order to maintain that, we would need to have increased revenues, whether it's property tax, sales tax or evaluation or, or the valuation increases or we would have to decrease our expenditures. So in two thousand and twenty-two, at the end of two thousand twenty-two, we did use some of the ARPA standard allowance of ten million, of our twelve point seven million dollars to transfer into the general fund for other governmental services. And again, it was used for these items here, pay study, capital improvement needs, IT fund, vehicles and equipment transferred to that particular fund. And so we have four point seven million left. Last week, we presented about the new ERP system. We had always intended to use that money for that particular project. However, considering our financial condition, our fund balance fluctuation, we talked last week about using part of the ARPA money to pay cash for some of those expenses that are non-capitalizable and can't be financed anyways. And then you all have the flexibility to see what can be done with the remaining amount, which is about four million dollars. And so this particular, these next two slides, they were presented back in May. Jason and Aaron had a presentation. But we're looking tonight for some long-term sustainable guidance and direction. And it kind of correlates to what Tom, as well as Garth, were talking about in terms of our financial condition and our rating. So currently, we can't sustain our current operations without a consistent and reliable revenue stream. So those four or so revenue sources that are in the. So those four or so revenue sources that are in the general fund, property taxes, sales taxes, compensating use, and franchise fees, of those, the only one that is the most sustainable and reliable is our property taxes. I had the previous slide in terms of if we do have issues with our fund balance fluctuating, then we look to finding other ways to increase that, whether it's new revenue sources or we reducing our services. We tried to this past year make an impact on our vehicles and equipment and our CIP. And as Jason mentioned, we've held off on that for two thousand and twenty-four. Property taxes increases have not been supported for city general fund operations. There's just been a lack of tolerance for that in the past. And we've talked about increasing user fees as well, but there's also been a lack of tolerance. And so our current one percent permanent sales tax could increase up to a maximum amount of two percent. And that would require over a fifty percent vote of the citizens. So we talked about it in May, and we talked about that a couple of years ago as well as a potential option for increasing revenue in the general fund.
Before we head off that slide, it just ties back to our approach with the one percent for the ballot initiative in November. Holding off on vehicles and equipment and deferred maintenance and CIP. We've done that. We've done that for the better part of two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty-two. And when you do receive one-time money, that's where the priority is. And we spent a lot of money on equipment and vehicles and bringing our pay up to an appropriate level and building a capital improvement plan. All those things took effect in two thousand twenty-three. Pay study was approved in June of twenty-two. We built the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, started funding it, went out, bought a lot of vehicles that we could find. Due to COVID, it's just been a different game. We used to buy almost our entire fleet from Shawnee Mission Ford. That has stopped occurring. And we are out looking for whatever we can find and whatever we can afford. We've shared a lot of that with you in the last twelve to eighteen months, recognizing we were paying for vehicles and trucks that well exceeded where we were from an estimating position. Ten million to eleven million dollars in the cash balance means a lot. It was really the intent of bringing Garth and Tom here tonight. I think it's extremely important to maintain that cash balance. I'm not a fan of eating into that because it is so hard to recapture. Short of one-time money coming from the federal government from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, we wouldn't have a healthy cash balance. And that one-time money, if we start using it for expenditures, we'll obviously never get it back, but it just puts the bullseye on how are you going to continue to pay for these things? I recognize property taxes is not popular, and it hasn't been for the better part of a decade. Many, many communities have focused on their sales tax. Our sales tax rate, we've talked about increasing it to nine, nine, and ten point two, gonna be a real challenge. But I do believe we're at a point, and we have found ourselves here many times, how do we want to proceed the next three to five years financially? And if it's just, if there's a majority that just feel like we are operating at too high of a level, we have too many resources going out for X, Y, or Z, then we need to talk about that, and we'll dial those back. We spent thirty-eight million last year. We brought in thirty-three million in revenue. Next week, you're gonna hear from your departments, if they were held to a thirty-three million dollar revenue stream, how that impacts each of them. It's significant. And you'll hear that. Revenue streams are flat. Revenue streams have been flat. One-time money from the federal government isn't going to be around the corner. We really do need some, some real interaction and engagement with you all in terms of just where we're going. I recognize going to the citizens for a vote isn't going to keep us from having some tough decisions to make for the two thousand twenty-five budget. We passed that in September. Even if you place a sales tax question on the ballot, it won't take effect until January of two thousand twenty-five. And we don't, we don't know the outcome of that. So we're trying to get into a mode of three to five years. We have a capital improvement plan we can share with you from last year. We've obviously put that on halt. It anticipated over a million dollars from the general fund alone to go back into deferred maintenance throughout the organization. That alone is substantial. Paying our people also important. We have an executive session here in a few minutes to talk about that. Also has a cost associated with it. Being flat with revenues doesn't give you a lot of flexibility to adjust to inflation, nor does it give you a lot of flexibility to address leaky roofs, which we are experiencing even probably right now in the Douglas Annex. Multiple trash cans set up catching water. We have reached an emergency repair at that facility. That's what happens when deferred maintenance is just kept kicked down the road. And we have these things identified. We have a robust CIP. It is trying to avoid situations where we're replacing facilities and our infrastructure at the point where it's past a point you can even repair. I know increasing revenues is difficult. But equally difficult is telling us what to quit doing as well. And if we just wanna limp along, we can show you what that looks like and the impacts of this organization. So really looking for a dialogue, really looking for your thoughts and your perspectives at where we're at financially. We want to come back with the information you need to help make those decisions. We've been at this a long time, and the story is very similar. Short of the, we highlight twelve point seven million, I'll say fifteen million really from the federal government that has come to us since nineteen. We've shoved it into holes, we've propped it up. It's one-time money. Now what? Do we wanna, do we wanna continue to spend that down? Do we wanna maintain cash balances? Where do we wanna go financially? Next slide, please.
Can I just make a comment, something that I, I think we've talked about a little bit? But something that I think is important that we talk about moving forward is kind of how, how we can more frequently kind of evaluate our positions, if that's possible. I, I know a lot of it is, is kind of complicated with, you know, what we have obligated versus what we've actually spent, things like that. But having a more periodic discussion of where we are to try and be more flexible throughout the year. Would that be helpful to, you know, staff to try, so that we can kind of make quicker decisions and have kind of a quicker feedback loop instead of having this discussion, you know, once a year? You know, I know we've been hearing a lot about the two thousand twenty-three cash balance, what we ended with. But can we check in on that every quarter maybe and adjust accordingly to try and avoid such a large, such a large variance?
Yeah, I'm very open to that, Peter. And I know the commission has expressed interest in that previously. We provided a pretty robust update in January at the retreat. We followed up in February and provided the public a similar update. We were back in front of you all in April and May, talking about strategies and alternatives. But I, there's a lot of subject matter here. And I do think next Tuesday, you'll get a feel from your departments just where they're struggling and evaluating their position. Revenue streams and expenses. Rebecca's built a really nice tool. We'll show you this next week as well. If you forecast out the rest of the year, it's very similar to last year. There's, there's going to be a need for, you know, a three million dollar to four million dollar insertion to maintain the ten to eleven million dollar cash balance. Paying our people and operating in a similar manner that we did last year is costing us roughly the same amount of money. And with revenues flattening, it's gonna eat in to a cash balance. That ARPA money can be there for another year. Again, we just have to realize not taking advantage of ten percent growth last year costs us two million dollars last year. It'll cost us another two point, some odd million this year. When we reduce mill levies and we take away our ability to capture revenue, not only then, but in the future, it ripples. It's more than just a one-time, two million dollar tax cut. You have to raise the levy back those three mills and then add that five percent growth we anticipate from Pot County or Riley County in order to realize more revenue. We actually in the general fund and the city side of the operation reduced the amount of property taxes based on that decision in September.
Yeah, if I recall, I believe that increased sales tax was kind of anticipated by the commission at the time and taken into account during that decision. And it looks like that's flat to maybe even a little bit low year-to-date. So, yeah, I mean, knowing that, you know, makes sense where we are. It's just, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a difficult, difficult decision.
Yeah, I think what we talked before about trying to do those reviews is trying to get something set up like on a quarterly basis so we can go over there, try to figure out some format where it's not too cumbersome in order to be, to take a look at that. I mean, I think we're gonna have to come up with a budget that's livable, that's gonna have to have stuff on both ends. We're gonna have to get some efficiencies and figure out where we need to trim around the edges and then take a look at what we can do from the revenue side. Then I think we need something to really explain to the citizens, you know, that, I mean, really, we're having a discussion here that we're broke. And that, you know, we got this huge influx of federal money. And after, we got all this money, but now we're broke. And how that, a good story of how that happened. Did we just do a salary increase that we couldn't afford down the road? Or what did we take into, didn't take into account? You know, we're talking about wanting to build a fifty, sixty billion dollar pool complex and add a bunch of fixed costs. But at the same time, you know, we're saying we can't even run the, the city without a huge tax increase. So I think we're gonna be able, need to be able to find out, you know, why that is. There is inflation, there is number of other things that are in there. But I don't, you know, I don't see a twenty percent property tax increase on the horizon. And as you said, even if we're gonna do a sales tax, we wouldn't know. We can't build that into the, the budget for next year. But I talked to a lot of people too, especially when they hear this, it's like, you know, we really do a bunch of extra capital expenditures. When a lot of people would say, you know, keep costs down, get the, get the streets in order, which is still one of the highest priorities that's out there. So I think we're gonna have to attack it on both ends, both the expenditures and both the revenue side.
Rena, where are we projected to end this fiscal year from revenue side? Do you have that in there?
No, it's not in this particular slide, but we have, I mean, the slide deck, but we have been talking internally that, and Jason alluded to it as well. If we stay on the same trajectory as we did last year, we would eat at our cash balance about another five million. So then that would be about six million or so. And then that's why that ARPA, those ARPA funds are available. And he had mentioned Rebecca has a tool that we can bring forward. But we would need to inject three to four million dollars back into the general fund. And the ARPA money is pretty much all we have available to do that at this time.
So I think for, for next week with the department heads, not using a thirty-three million dollar revenue stream, I think is what you said. Like, how could they do it with that, but using that, what, forty million? Does that make sense?
We're not gonna generate forty million in revenue unless you move ARPA money over to the general fund as a one-time gesture.
So that would include that ARPA fund? So really, we're back to thirty-five?
We generated thirty-three million dollars in the general fund last year, and we spent thirty-eight. We're on track to spend thirty-seven million this year and probably take in thirty-three. So if you don't move the ARPA money over, as Rena just said, it'll eat into that cash balance. I don't necessarily think we're broke, Commissioner. I do think we have had the same issues in front of you for a long time. And it is the expectation that the revenues will not be increased. Figure it out. Everything costs more. We are paying our people more. So we're gonna have to either start moving in the other direction of doing less with less people and not renewing equipment, not buying new vehicles, not doing the capital projects. Becoming more efficient is, is an option. But I have, we have multiple departments that will talk to you next week about efficiencies when they're eighty, ninety percent people and providing services back to the public. We have, I do believe where we're headed with park and rec and the sales tax, it is about setting them off to the side and let them operate and run like an enterprise. Be self-sufficient. Yeah, they have a revenue stream, but the more they say, the more they create in savings, the more they can put back into those parks and put back into those programs. When you talk about an airport that's running and a fire department that are running and providing those services, there's not a lot of flexibility for them. They're highly regulated or they're highly dependable on people. And we have to provide those services. So what, where do we open up opportunities for efficiencies? What departments, what divisions? That's the kind of conversation.
It's the way you do processes and things. If you have no programs, inficiencies, you have no efficiencies.
So this is just, again, our summary of what we just discussed and needing direction on in sustainable revenue, city service reset, and then our strategic plan and community expectations. And next week, we'll come forward as department heads to present our two thousand twenty-three actuals, as well as what we're projecting for two thousand twenty-four and how any projections for two thousand and twenty-four could impact how we operate. Yes.
You mean by city service reset?
So operating at our current funding level, live within our current revenue. So as was previously mentioned, we brought in thirty-three million dollars in two thousand twenty-three. So would we scale back our services to beat twenty, thirty-three million dollars or sustain our current level, which is, we had thirty-eight million dollars in expenditures. So then we need to figure out a way to generate six to eight million dollars in revenue. And then ability to keep growing or providing sustained three to five, three to five percent annual increases.
Okay, thanks.
So each time we will come forward this budget season, as in the past, we will have an estimated valuation. And that will be compared to our revenue neutral rate. We do not have any formal information from the county yet, but we have put something together just so when we do have that information, it could be our base and something to compare to. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we leveraged thirty-four point zero million dollars in all of our funds. Not just not the general fund, all of our funds. And then we are estimating a county valuation at seven hundred and thirty million. Last year, we ended around almost close to seven hundred million. So our estimated two thousand twenty-five budget revenue neutral rate would be forty-six point five nine four. And compared to our current mill levy. And compared to our current mill levy, it's at 48.928. So to generate $34 million, again, the mill levy would reduce to 46.594. And so that's not capturing any growth or anything like that. So we'll have more of that conversation hopefully next week. And I know we'll have it for, by the June 25th meeting. And we'll continue to update that information at each budget work session.
By July 16th, we have to make a determination whether we're going to exceed or meet the revenue neutral rate. In the event we plan to take on any additional revenue beyond what we received in 2024, we will exceed the revenue neutral rate. It gives us more time actually to do our budget and adopt it. Because if you're not going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, you'll need to adopt in August. If you exceed the revenue neutral rate, you have until September.
Is that, and that's the state?
Yeah. And since the revenue neutral rate has been adopted, we have gone through the July process and then passed the budget in September because we have exceeded the revenue neutral rate in our preliminary budget discussions.
There is a rate, there isn't a value that you adopt in July that is shared with the taxpayer. It's a notice. We also then set a public hearing in late August for the first hearing in September, and that is also published. Those two values are usually different. Your conversations from July 12th through the end of August usually create a different number. I've argued, I'm not sure why we create the confusion with the state law, but we do. We end up noticing the taxpayer twice of two different values of what their property taxes will be. But that's, that's what we have to do. You end up establishing two hearings on the same night on two different values and you have to host those hearings right here in that room. It's confusing, but I wanted to bring it up to you tonight because you'll start seeing this as we move forward. And you may have a constituent ask you why. It's all embedded in the state law and the process we need to follow.
Next, I will just go over the numbers to the information. Garth and Tom talked about our debt portfolio, the bond and interest fund. It is a mill levy impacted fund. We also get sales taxes in there as well as special assessments, but it's used to pay our general obligation principal and interest debt. I have a breakdown of our debt history, beginning in 2021 through the end of 2023. And then as of April 30th, 2024, broken out by our general obligation bonds. It's the non-special assessment portion first and then the special assessment portion that's remaining. And then we have the same for our temporary notes. Our special obligation bonds consist of star bonds, TIB bonds, and TDD. And then we have some lease purchases. And then a few KDHE loans for water and wastewater improvements. And then a transportation loan that will end this year. So as of April 30th, our debt is $323 million. And of that, the GO portion is just the bonds and the temporary notes. And Garth mentioned about our debt limitation and we'll get into that calculation as well. But those are the four line items that are used to calculate our debt limit. This is just a different version of that last column. And again, general obligation bonds and temporary notes. And if it's city at large, meaning that the city is responsible for that debt, various revenue financing sources to pay for that. And then utilities, if they're responsible for the debt, special assessments, and then our special obligation bonds.
A question, so we just did a sale last month. Well, I'm assuming those haven't closed yet and so that's, they're not on here yet?
Correct. So those will appear in June. So our closing is June 14th. That's when we will receive the money from the investors. And that 41.405 will be in this section. And then 11.995 in this section appear. And then we'll pay off debt at the end of October, beginning of November. And so that general obligation bond amount will be reduced. Also, temporary notes, we issue temporary notes up to four times a year. We've only issued them once thus far. And we do pay down on some of our temporary notes if we are paying for them with cash. And so one of our projects that we pay for cash were the middle school improvements, those gyms that were connected to the two middle schools. We paid, we issued temporary notes, but we had sales tax quality of life come in to be able to pay off those temporary notes. And so those will pay off this year as well.
Do you know how much GO bonds we're planning on paying off?
It's about $12 billion or so.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be roughly the same amount once the new bonds come on and the old bonds get paid off?
Yeah, it's about a wash.
I think it was, yeah, I think it was about 11 million or something like that that we issued?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So Garth mentioned our limits toward bonded indebtedness. And then those that are not subject, water, sewer, stormwater refundings, and then certain street improvements, intersections, and streets that front school district or city property. And our total assessed valuation not only includes just the property, but also motor vehicles, so that's a total amount. And then our debt limit ratio at 30%. And this is the state imposed debt limit. And then this is the amount that's subject to the limit. So if we go back, all of that amount, it's about 126 and another 140. So that's over, close to, almost 300, close to 250 million. But because of those exemptions, that's the amount that's actually subject to the debt limit. And then our remaining authority is 59.3. So when we issue debt, we have to factor that in. So the temporary notes, as well as the GO bonds that we have outstanding currently are factored into that. And so those that are rolling up to be GO bonds, they're not really affecting this number. It's just when we issue the new temporary notes that will be added into that to either increase or decrease depending on what's subject to the debt limit or not. And then finally, our upcoming work sessions. So next week, department heads will be here to provide an update. June 25th, we have outside agencies. So any agency that is requesting money from the general fund, economic development, transient guest tax, those will come forward. July 16th, we need to pass our resolution for our revenue neutral rate. July 23rd, the chamber and then the convention visitors bureau will be here. August 13th, our utilities update. And then September 3rd will be our public hearing on our revenue neutral rate and our 2025 budget. So Jason mentioned about those hearings and those two different rates that we will have to have approved. And then September 17th is our second reading of those two and the passing of the budget.
Busy summer.
It is a busy summer. Any questions?
You did a really great job on that. Thank you for answering a lot of the questions I had going into it as well.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Jason, for your additions.
Thank you, Rena.
You're welcome.
Peter, any additional questions for Rena before she leaves the podium?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for that very comprehensive presentation. Collectively, all three of them were extremely, extremely helpful. Gary, is this the, did you want to make public comment on this part?
Good evening, Commissioners. In the five minutes that I have, I hope to not use them all up. So there'll be some relief. Man, I have a lot of questions racing through my mind, but I have a feeling that I'm only making statements. I'm not getting answers. Is that correct, Jason? Just let me know because I need to not waste your time or mine in terms of phrasing questions. I just want to point out a couple of things that I heard, and that was tremendous. Thank you very much in terms of that information. Unfortunately, there's probably no way to take all that information and boil it down to a three-page flyer to hand to a citizen to help them to understand how this all works, whether it's the school district or the county or the, or the city. And I'm, as you know, because I've been up here for the last year, I don't know, maybe last year, I can't remember, maybe the year before that, talking about property taxes. And you're, you're all aware of a couple of things that I'm going to say. And my wife has sometimes referred to me as a very tactless person. So I hope I don't offend anyone, but I probably will. So maybe I should apologize to start with. I just want to point out, these are my last three tax statements. And although they're boring and everybody else gets one, you know exactly what they say in terms of their format. But I just want to point out a couple of things. This one is 2021, 2022, and 2023. In 2021, my contribution to the city, excuse me, our contribution to the city in the form of property taxes increased from 2020 to 2021 by $131. The following year, it increased by $149. So that's about a $280 increase over two years. Somebody would say 140 a year, big deal. Well, it is a big deal. Actually, it's not a big deal for me because I'm still blessed and still working. So I can pay that. I can, I really, up here for the people who are in a bind. I have in-laws who just moved here three years ago. They're in their 80s on a fixed income. And this is what's going to come in the future, from what I hear. And that's, that's a challenge for them. Certainly it is. Maybe their investments will continue to do well for them. And then I didn't want to leave out my appreciation for the 2023 statement because you allowed me to keep $6.51. Yeah, that's what I thought when I looked at it. I do appreciate that, but I would appreciate it, the other two, not being as big an increase as what they are. But I understand where you're coming from. And I'm getting more educated through her presentation and other information that I'm gleaning from the other taxing entities to try to understand where this all comes from. The thing that, the thing that always strikes me every year, I have about two minutes left, is the fact that if I, if I'm mistaken, I'm dramatically mistaken, but most of the property taxes that you collect, if not all of them, which I don't think it's all of them, but most of the, the majority of the property taxes that you collect, if I'm not mistaken, go to wages and benefits. Now, I know you dump them in the general fund, but they go to wages and benefits. So the challenge is, as I think I said last year, is you got to find a way to control your personnel costs. And you made reference to a big raise. Well, who got those big raises? Were they the people at the bottom or were they people at the top? Just to keep them. I mean, those are your decisions. I'm just throwing out that information. And I think that it's important to keep in mind that, I, I don't think any of you current Commissioners or past Commissioners intend with purpose to gouge a property taxpayer. You're just trying to run a business, or in this case, a government. And you're doing the best you can with the time that you volunteer and all the volumes of stuff that you will be reading or have read in the past if you've been on the commission for quite some time. But there's a couple of things I just want you to keep in mind. I don't have the expectation, and I don't think any citizen should have the expectation that although I would love to see the R and R hit in Manhattan, Kansas, but it's probably more realistic that it's going to hit, get hit in Scott City. That's probably just the reality of it, not going to get hit in Manhattan. You're going to exceed the R and R. That's really true. How much you'll exceed it by, that's your call. But the last thing I want to leave you with, and please, I'm not trying to say anything offensive, but think about this. Everybody in this room who works for the city gets their property taxes paid by everybody else who works in the city. That's where the money comes from to pay their salaries. And they get that money paid for them. Thank you.
All right, public comment, it's now closed. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for Rena or Jason? There was, we do not need any motions.
How much time do we need?
What would you recommend for timing?
30 minutes.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I can do 30 minutes. I'm, should I move that we recessed into executive session to discuss the terms of agreement between the city administration and local 2275 International Association of Firefighters that presently need to be, remain confidential pursuant to the exception set forth in KSA 75-4319B3 related to employer-employee negotiations and resume an open meeting at 9:15 PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner McCullough has made a motion and Commissioner Mada has seconded. City Clerk, will you please read the role?
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mada?
Wherever you are.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Little voice.
Yeah.
After that mute, still for granted.
You are, I love, you're huge.
Aren't those fun?
I remember sitting down with you. I worked something on Friday, and I was, I was first.
It should be done.
Yeah.